And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So if I, I care, if I fade out, I'll be going back to my crossword. Okay. Could we please have a moment of silence for all those affected by COVID and the people suffering in the Ukraine and also those still suffering in Russia? Okay, thank you. Okay, on the agenda, we have public service announcements, consideration and possible action on Safe Streets grants, consideration and possible, oh, B, we're going to hold till next week, consideration and possible action on the cooperative agreement between the town of Sturbridge and the Federal Highway Administration, consideration and possible action on the contract for SSV architects for the Joshua High Library HVAC project, consideration and possible action on the town budget, consideration and possible action on annual town meeting warrant articles, consideration and possible action on special town meeting warrant articles, old business, new business, correspondence, citizens forum. Then there is a request for executive session, then we will adjourn. Okay, public service announcements, Ian?
I have none.
Chase?
I have none.
Mary?
Yes, I just want to thank the residents of Sturbridge for your vote of confidence, looking forward to serving, and thank the board for putting up with me for longer, another three years, God willing. So thank you very much for those who came out to vote.
Okay, I have a few here. Earth Day is April 22nd, Neighborhood Trash Pickup is April 18th to the 24th, pickup bags at the Town Vine, which happens to be on New Boston Road Extension, or the Center Office Building. You can call the DPW to schedule a pickup. Pickup's available for the week of April 25th. All children should be supervised by an adult. Wear gloves to protect your hands. Safety first. Only work during daylight hours. Never place hazardous materials into bags. Okay, and then there is a, from the Council on Aging, kickoff for Walk Mass Challenge. Registration is Wednesday, April 27th, 1 to 4 on the Town Common. Your participation helps your COA win money for fitness programs and gives you the chance to win one of several prizes. This year, the challenge is open to everyone aged five and up in the Commonwealth. Walk with your family, your friends, or on your own. All we ask is those under 60, sponsor an older adult, grandparent, family member, neighbor, or older friend. No fundraising is involved. Okay, and there's a whole list of things, but the registration, you can go online for it too, but the registration is April 27th. Please, you have an announcement?
Yeah, I just forgot because we're not going to be meeting again. I want to wish everybody a happy blessed Easter, those who celebrate, and a happy Passover and a blessed Passover for others who celebrate that.
Okay. It's never over till the fat ladies. Okay, first on the agenda, we have consideration and possible action on Safe Streets grant.
Well, I think the vice principal should be up here shortly.
Okay, so we'll get back to that.
I just tapped into him. He might have thought it was 6:30. You know, we usually meet at 6:30. I just texted him and told him it's at 6:00, so maybe he'll come. I know he wasn't going home.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on the contract. Nope, that's what we're holding until next week. Consideration and possible action on the cooperative agreement between the town of Sturbridge and the Federal Highway Administration. Bob?
So this is an agreement that was specified and called for in the memorandum of agreement that the board signed with the Mass Department of Transportation back in, I think it was last December, and the Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, and Eastern Federal Lands Highway Division. So this is part of the many funding sources that are coming together for the Grand Trunk Trail. And so the amount here, this list of the $208,000, $258.64 is what's remaining after there were certain deductions to develop plans, et cetera, for the project. So this is the long-awaited agreement that Tom Chamberlain has been working on and is ready for the board's signature to finish off the funding for the Grand Trunk Trails project.
Okay.
And I mentioned that we've had some good news on that project recently. Last week, we had a bid opening for the construction contract. It came in very favorably. So we're feeling pretty, knock on wood, at this point, comfortable about the budget, which we had some concerns about early on. And then also, we had a virtual meeting with DCR, with the state, that is managing the state grant, $300,000. And I have to say, they were quite happy, pleased with the recent progress that we've been making on the project and are showing some flexibility about carrying whatever funds might be remaining after June 30th over into the next fiscal year. So we will still have those, although we're pretty optimistic about the schedule. So I think all that, with the work that's been done on the budget and DCR and so forth, and enlisting BSC speaks to the really good work that Tom Chamberlain and also Gene Bouvan have put into this project. It's really after, what, since 2005, really starting to come together now.
Been a while. Any questions on it? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion then to sign the agreement?
I'll make a motion to sign the Safe Streets grant. No, no, I'm sorry.
Cooperative agreement.
The cooperative federal highway grant.
Cooperative agreement.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Discussion? All in favor?
He's on his way. He thought 6:30. He's coming.
Yeah, I probably wasn't clear what.
I couldn't remind him as well, but I really didn't know until 4:30.
Okay, then we have consideration and possible action on the contract for SSV architects for the Joshua High Library HVAC project.
And this is a follow-up from the meetings that we had just last week, the ARPA meeting that appropriated or approved money to recommend to the selectmen to go forward with this contract, and the board approved it. We're hoping to have various scopes of services produced, one which will, I guess for lack of a better term, be a minimal cost and try to avoid the sprinklers over at the library, and then go on from there about whatever is necessary due to the nature of the work. So Robin has worked on this, and we've been dealing with SSV to expedite the contracts so that they can begin work and meet our timeframe and have those options for the board to consider before.
Any questions?
This is going to be ARPA money, correct? We need to mention that when making?
Yeah. You're just asking for approval on the $50,000 right now?
For the $50,000 at your meeting, after the ARPA meeting, yeah.
Okay, so you're requesting we give approval to move forward?
To approve the contract, yeah.
Okay. We don't have a definitive bottom line dollar yet, do we?
$43,780 is what it says here, right? It says authorize the chair to execute a contract for design, $43,780.
Yeah.
What page is that on?
Page 101 on the contract.
Oh, okay.
It's actually bold.
Yeah, it's right there.
So that's what we're, so I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to execute the contract with SSV architects for $43,780 to be paid by ARPA funds.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I just have a question. You know, when we require insurance for $1 million, do somebody review it to make sure they have it, you or Robin?
Yeah, they'll submit a certificate. They'll ask them that the town be a co-insured, first insured.
Okay, they give a certificate.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible, oh, sorry, you got a question. All in favor? Okay, consideration of possible action on the town budget. Okay, has everybody got their? Oh, okay. You want to bring them up?
Yes.
Yeah.
Paula contacted me about signing off on the receipt of the money for Safe Streets. It looks like it's going to be quite a lengthy project going on for a few years, so I thought it would be good for the board to get an update on this, on the project and the work that's being done down at the school.
Yes, I apologize.
Good evening.
I apologize that I was late regarding, I thought it was a 6:30 meeting. It was a weird, weird time. Don't worry about it.
Usually it is, but we jump around.
Okay. It's actually good. I'm going to give you a little bit of history about Safe Roots to School. They've actually asked me to be a speaker at their award ceremony this year because of my experience with them, so this will be actually a nice dry run. So Safe Roots to School encourages healthy choices of walking and biking. So it revolves around six principles. Education, so bike and pedestrian safety, evaluation, they'll support with arrival and dismissal procedures, encouraging walking to school, so walk to school days, yard sign contests, engineering, grant opportunities there, equity, so regardless of mobility, socioeconomic level, or race, they want to make sure that these operations can happen as well, and engagement, so that networking aspect. And I'm actually on a networking call tomorrow with them. So in 2006, I was in Gardner, and our superintendent said she wanted everybody to, every school administrator, to embrace Safe Roots to School. And she said, it's a good organization and it has a good grant potential, is what she had said. So again, following my director's lead, I jumped in. Couple of highlights from there was that we did a walk to school day, and actually, I'm looking at maybe doing something with Colby, our new SRO. He's really excited about Safe Roots program. But we would do a walk from Gardner High School all the way down to Elm Street School with the marching band every fall. It was this huge community event and a lot of fun. We also did get an infrastructure grant there for about $1.2 million to upgrade the sidewalks on Elm Street. So they actually do provide money when money is needed. So I come to Sturbridge in 2019, and the big question is, how can we participate at Burgess because we don't have any walkers and/or bikers to school? But again, it's more than that. It's encouraging those healthy lifestyles. So one of my first things was, I connected with Gene Bouvan and Butch Jackson because in order to make this all work, you'd really need that connection with the municipality. Safe Roots requires that, so it becomes this, they, the town can't apply for a Safe Roots to School grant unless they work through the school. And so again, it really needs that partnership. In 2019, November, we did pedestrian safety classes. COVID hit in March 2020. We had some sign contest winners. We actually had two years of sign contest winners. Every year, they put together a prevent, a yard sign prevention regarding some sort of transportation safety. So two years ago, Rose Wenjender won for high visibility. And last year, we had Abigail Corinda and Tess Baker for texting and driving signs. So again, you know, probably 50 entries, and we had two of the six, I think, that they select last year and one of the six that they selected this year. So again, my art teacher, Julie Vinton, is instrumental in that. We have some, what she hopes is going to be winners for this year, and she's really good. So let's hope. In March 2021, we were recognized for our resiliency and adaptability through the Safe Roots program for our work during COVID. The Sturbridge Police use Safe Roots to School for the National Night Out Day. That's a celebration that they have every year in August. That was this past August. This September, we formed the Safe Roots to School Task Force, which joins Gene Bouvan, facilities at the high school, facilities for the town, Robin, and our school. And it's, and we actually have to have a parent on it as well. And again, we meet usually about two or three times a year, just to sort of, again, this was in prep to get this grant. So we were looking at meeting, we're actually going to have another meeting soon, to sort of get next steps in what we need to do for the grant. We're going to be doing pedestrian and bike safety in May for our second graders' pedestrian and in fourth grade, for fourth grade, our bike safety. So we are looking, instead of doing walk to school days, when we had mass breaks, we would talk about, you know, healthy lifestyle choices, and teachers would do walking mass breaks around the school. And it's really a nice thing. So hopefully, we can continue that, and we will continue that tradition. So how do we get the grant? And a lot of components come together. So in July 2021, well, actually, it was earlier than that. It was probably in May, they sent me something for the Shared Streets Grant. And that's a very quick grant that we can get, and it's usually through the town. But I forwarded that to Butch, and I said, hey, Butch, is there anything we can do around the school to get this? And so we talked, and they built Burgess. We didn't have as many buses. And so when you went from the east parking lot down, the sidewalk was just a tar sidewalk, but all the rest of the sidewalks were these beautiful cement sidewalks. And so you had a grass barrier between the pavement and the curbing. And so again, we were traversing kids over that, and again, the grass was all torn up. It was dangerous with the snow in the winter. And so we had an issue. That project fit into that scope of what the Complete Streets would do, excuse me, the Shared Streets would do. We applied, Butch applied. Butch got the grant for $35,000. And in, I believe it was right before the start of school this year, we had all those sidewalks poured. Looks absolutely beautiful. It brings that whole area now together. So again, that's, they like to connect projects, and they like to, when communities are working with DOT, they like to connect all these projects and have all these sort of, you know, people working together to do that. So again, I applied in 2021 for the infrastructure grant. And again, the more participation that you show in Safe Roots, the better your application looks together. And so that's, that's an important aspect. Plus, I had to work with the police department to get the stats for tickets and accidents in the area of Cedar Street, very, very comprehensive of what we needed to compile. Looking at it, it's out of 100. I kind of did the tally in my head. I mean, not having walkers just banged us on 10 points off of the 100 right away. So looking at it, I'm like, ugh, not quite sure how we're going to bear in this grant. Submitted the grant, and then Butch calls and says, hey, I got my Complete Street projects from Route 20 all the way down Cedar to the rec center. I emailed Diane Hansen, who's our coordinator for Safe Roots to School. She said, thank you so much for that information. I'll make sure that they get it. You know, there is a Complete Streets person on the board, so they should know that, but thanks for the heads up. And in January 2021, we got the, 2022, we got the Safe Roots grant. We're looking at a 408 multi-use path that will connect Burgess to the Complete Streets project. You can almost see where the sidewalk does end. If you go down by the northern baseball field, the sidewalk just ends. So it'll be a completion and redoing of that sidewalk to the crosswalk in a multi-use path. So there are three options right now that we're looking at. One is to extend the roadway towards the rec center and put in probably what would be like a retaining wall and a, it has to be a 10-foot wide path so bikes and pedestrians can in fact traverse that path. Because with the existing structure, we don't have enough to put in two bike lanes plus a sidewalk. So limitations exist. There are wetlands there. We've actually had Becky Gendrow involved in these discussions to see the impact in recreating 5,000. So that is one option. The other option, which I think they're probably leaning towards, is a suspended boardwalk, which I thought was going to be, I knew the limitations of the site, and I knew the site visit, I was very concerned about it. But when, if you go down to Eastham at the Cape, and you go to Fort Hill, and you see the sidewalks, I think they have them already in town here, they're not sidewalks, the suspended like bridges over those conservation areas, I was thinking of that. And then I said, just, I wonder if the DOT would fund that. So I just did a quick search on multi-use paths, DOT, and on the cover of their book, they showed a multi-use path that was wooden, that they were, that was touting their multi-use path projects. So I thought, at least, I think it's within, you know, a shot of asking. They really like that idea. It doesn't have to be wood. It can be many, I mean, we had a site visit last month, and they were excited to get going on this project. The other one, in looking at also the limitations, one of the DOT guys said, hey, you have a limited spot. If we just put in a sidewalk and forgot the bike lanes and asked for the variance for the DOT, would that work? And, you know, he said, you got a great argument for that variance. So I think what I like about Safe Roots is, they want this project to succeed, and they really want to work with us and to work with conservation. The, we asked for $219,000 to get this project done. Again, that's taking some, you know, she, they give you some specs, and you sort of put together the specs, and it's sort of clunky, and, you know, that was the figure that we came up with. When we got the grant, they automatically doubled that and said, they anticipate the grant being, because they know, we're not engineers, we're just school officials. They said, the grant's going to be 219 to 440. By the end of the walk that day, the site visit, they said, I'm probably looking at more like a half million to $700,000 to get this done. So again, there's already somebody there who's on the DOT planning saying, well, if we know that in early 2022, or, you know, if we know it early enough, can we get the funding increase? Because we only have 440, set aside. They said, not a problem. Your completion date is 2026. We have two years to look at the funding, and we can make sure that the funding will exist. So again, it's sort of that, this is why this program is really good, because they, they want things to succeed. They want the project. I mean, you know, looking at a suspended, a suspended boardwalk definitely fits in with the, you know, the quaintness that I think Sturbridge likes. So I think all that could come together. But again, I'm, I'm very confident, whatever they decide, I think is going to be good. So so far, we've had the site visit. We've signed the MOU. The good thing about this grant is, we're only held for some legal costs, which I think would be minimal based on what I've heard, and some permitting costs. Otherwise, the whole thing is funded through the DOT. So it's, it's not a matching grant. It's not, we'll fund you up to 80% or some sort of metrics that way. So any questions?
Good. Any questions, comments?
Great news.
I like the pavilion suggestion.
The what?
The pavilion.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, they're both, either way is good, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, it, it turns into a life, because I remember when we started doing this with Gardner, it turns into a life, the engineers know what to do, so they're going to present us some design plans and stuff, and we'll have some comment. And it really then becomes more of a Department of Public Works project that they will be spearheading, and we'll be just sort of on the periphery consulting. But I do want to take an active role as much as I can as the school to make sure that the project is successful and is what we need. So.
Sounds very good. Any comment, Bob?
No, I think it's, it sounds like an excellent program. This, you know, I think Paul mentioned it's going to be some time, it's going to be several years before it's completed, and it looks like it's going to be a great program.
They did say that if we are quick in getting our ducks in a row, we can put in that we'd like to start it early. So if a project drops out in 2025, and we're in line, we could actually get it a year early. So again, I plan on making sure that we sort of get as much as we can just rolling, so.
With your enthusiasm, I'm sure it'll work. Now, you don't need anything from us right now, do you?
No, not at all. I just appreciate your support.
Okay, you've got it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Enjoy the, enjoy the sun.
Oh, yeah. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is the town budget. Everybody's got their book. And we'll do it as we have done in the past. I'll read the line item. If anyone has a question or a disagreement or something, say hold, then we'll go back and vote. Everything that's not on hold, and then we'll vote the holes or answer. It's the, it's the blue tab. In Com handbook.
Do we have another one?
Colin Carroll? Mother's job is never done. Okay, so the first item is under board of selectmen, purchase of services, $2,200. Other charges, $1,400. Total expenses, $3,600. Town administrator, department head salary, $170,000. Merit-based pay incentive, $29,910. Salary wages, $43,862. Personnel costs, $243,772. Purchase of services, $19,000. Supplies, $3,150. Other charges, $6,500. Matching grant funds, $5,000. Total expenses there, $33,650. Total administrative line item is $277,422. Finance committee personnel costs, $4,108. That is not for the finance committee members. Purchase of services, $3,200. Other charges, $200. Total expenses, $3,400 for a total on the finance committee line item of $7,508. The town accountant, department head salaries, $91,559. Salary and wages, $17,688. Personnel costs, $109,247. Purchase of services, $400. Supplies, $700. Other charges, $550. Total expenses, $1,650 for a town accountant, total of $110,897. Key board of assessors, department head salaries, not salaries, $96,194. Salaries, wages, $34,424. Longevity, $250. Personnel costs, $130,868. Purchase of service, $29,531. Supplies, $1,700. Other charges, $1,253. Total expenses, $32,484. Total board of assessors, $163,352. Finance director, department head salaries, $121,347. Salaries, wages, $173, sorry, $173,170. Certification stipend, $1,000. Longevity, $1,100. Personnel costs, $296,617. Purchase of services, $27,750. Supplies, $4,100. Purchase of services, $27,750. Supplies, $4,100. Other charges, $2,275. Total expenses, $34,125. So the finance director total amount, $330,742. Key town council, purchase of service, $110,000. Total is $110,000. Information technology, department head salaries, $75,574. Personnel costs, $75,574. Purchase of services, $168,764. Supplies, $5,000. Capital outlay, $45,400. Total expenses, $219,160. Total information technology budget, $2,294,734. Town clerk, department head salary, $80,141. Salary wages, $42,880. Certification stipend, $1,000. Longevity, $150. Personnel costs, $124,171. Purchase of services, $1,680. Supplies, $2,650. Other charges, $2,550. Total expenses, $6,880. Total town clerk budget, $131,051. Election and registrations, board salary, $500. Salary wages, $19,962,000. Personnel costs, $20,462. Purchase of services, $12,725,000. Supplies, $3,725. Total expenses, $16,450. Total election and registration, $36,912. Conservation commission, department head salary, $77,807. Salary wages, $31,261. Longevity, $300. Personnel cost, $109,368. Purchase of services, $7,600. Supplies, $3,600. Other charges, $550. Total expenses, $11,750. Total conservation budget, $121,118. Town planner, head, department head salary, $107,374. Salary wages, $41,327. Longevity, $450. Personnel costs, $149,151. Purchase of services, $49,90. Supplies, $5,169. Intergovernmental, $2,859. Other charges, $1,270. Total expenses, $558,388. For a total planning department of $207,539. Zoning Board of Appeals, purchase of services, $500. Other charges, $90. Total expenses, $590. Total zoning Board of Appeals, $590. Key Economic Development, salary wages, $31,472. Personnel costs, $31,472. Purchase of services, $1,500. Supplies, $2,700. Other charges, $895. Total expenses, $5,095. Economic Development budget total, $36,567. Facilities, department head salary, $75,540. Salary wages, $60,795. Personnel costs, $136,335. Purchase of services, $8,600. Supplies, $10,400. Other charges, $990. Total expenses, $19,990. Facilities total budget, $156,325. Town hall, purchase of services, $36,836. Supplies, zero. Total expenses, $36,836. For a town hall, total budget of $36,836. Center office building, purchase of services, $33,446. Supplies, zero. Total expenses, $33,446. Center office total budget, $33,446. Center office building, purchase of services, $30,296. Total expenses, $30,296, which is also the total of the senior center building. Joshua Hyde Library Building, purchase of services, $33,190. Supplies, $1,700. Total expenses, $34,890. Joshua Hyde Library total, $34,890. Safety complex, purchase of services, $93,473. Supplies, $13,300. Total expenses, $106,773. Safety complex total, $106,773. Nursery school, purchase of services, $5,525. Total expenses, $5,525, which is the total nursery school budget. Eight Brookfield Road, total budget there is zero. Police department. Department head salaries, $154,527. Salary and wages, $2,557,497. Longevity, $200. Stipend Emergency Management, $6,000. Overtime, $494,25. Personnel costs, $3,219,749. Purchase of services, $98,108. Supplies, $83,834. Other charges, $10,047. Capital outlay, $132,000. Total expenses, $323,989. Total police department, $3,543,738. Fire department, department head salary, $123,884. Salary wages, $1,336,862. Overtime, $262,764. Longevity, $1,900. Personnel costs, $1,725,410. Purchase of services, $133,116. Supplies, $88,700. Other charges, $4,280. Total expenses, $226,096. Total fire department, Building inspector, department head salary, $93,848. Salary wages, $45,742. Longevity, $300. Personnel costs, $139,890. Purchase of services, $1,620. Supplies, $3,039. Other charges, $700. Total expenses, $5,359. Total building inspector department, $145,249. Sailor of weights and measures, purchase of service, $5,350, which is the total for that budget item. Inspectors, electrical and plumbing, salary and wages, $50,000. Personnel costs, $50,000. Purchase of services, $593,000. Supplies, $220,000. Other charges, $2,465. Excuse me. Total expenses, $3,278. For a total for the inspectors, budget, $53,278. Tree warden, $9,232. That was salary wages, personnel costs, $9,232. Purchase of services, $22,500. Supplies, zero. Other charges, $960. Total expenses, $23,460. For tree warden, total of $32,692. Education, Burgess Elementary School, $12,635,439. Tantascot Town, Tantascot Town Chair, sorry, $7,845,210. Transportation, Tantascot Transportation Assessment, $92,691. Total, Tantascot, $7,937,901. Charter School Transportation, $5,000. Total Charter School, $5,000. Education total of $20,577,340. The Department of Public Works, department head salaries, $90,114. Salary wages, $908,989. Overtime, $20,000. Longevity, $1,050. Personnel costs, $10,020,153. Purchase of services, $110,900. Supplies, $98,000. Other charges, $6,800. Total expenses, $215,700. Department of Public Works total budget, $1,235,853. Town road maintenance, $6,000. Total expenses, $6,000. Total road maintenance budget, $6,000. Snow and ice removal, overtime, $52,788. Personnel costs, $52,788. Purchase of services, $70,000. Supplies, $100,000. Total expenses, $170,000. For a total snow and ice control budget, $222,788. Landfill recycling center, salary wages, $127,842. Overtime, $1,500. Longevity, $400. Personnel costs, $129,742. Purchase of services, $188,875. Supplies, $5,050. Total expense of $193,925. Landso, landfill recycling total budget, $323,667. Board of Health, department head salaries, $82,507. Salary and wages, $27,55. Personnel costs, $109,562. Purchase of services, $8,450. Supplies, $2,350. Other charges, $1,800. Total expenses, $12,600. Board of Health total budget, $122,162. Community health, community healthcare total, $5,000. Total expenses, $5,000. Total budget there, $5,000. Inspection and testing, public health inspector, $54,153. Personnel costs, $54,153. Inspections and testing total, $54,153. Council on Aging, department head salary, $75,540. Salary wages, $74,136. Longevity, $700. Personnel costs, $150,376. Purchase of services, $260. Supplies, $1,700. Other charges, $725. Transportation, $2,000. Total expenses, $6,485. Council on Aging total Veterans Services, salary wages, $10,139. Personnel costs, $10,139. Purchase of services, $250. Supplies, $575. The American Legion, $2,400. Memorial slash Veterans Day, $3,200. Other charges, $500. Veterans benefits, $58,300. Total expenses, $65,225. Veterans Service total budget, $75,364. Joshua Hyde Library operation, department head salary, $96,820. Salary wages, $332,616. Longevity, $1,100. Personnel costs, $430,536. Purchase of services, $20,45. Supplies, $4,060. Library materials, $113,000. Other charges, $2,700. Total expenses, $139,805. Total for Joshua Hyde Library operations, $570,341. Recreation, department head salaries, $64,831. Salary wages, $34,772. Longevity, $100. Personnel costs, $99,703. Purchase of services, $24,181. Supplies, $3,319. Team sports, $7,500. Other charges, $210. Total expenses, $35,210. Total recreation, $134,913. Trails Committee, purchase of services, $200. Other charges, $100. Total expense, $300. Total expense, three hundred. Total for the Trails Committee budget, three hundred. Historical Commission, purchase of services, one thousand, seven hundred fifty. Supplies, one hundred. Other charges, two hundred. Total expenses, two thousand, fifty dollars. Total Historical Commission, two thousand, fifty dollars. Debt Service Principal, Burgess Elementary School, nine hundred fourteen thousand dollars. Town Hall, one hundred sixty-two thousand. Total expense, one million, seventy-six thousand. Total debt service, one million, seventy-six thousand. Debt service interest, short-term interest, ten thousand. Burgess Elementary School, two hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars. Town Hall, forty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-four. Total expense, two hundred ninety-eight, eight hundred eighteen. Debt service total, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars. Okay, unclassified group insurance, two million, eighty-five thousand dollars. Unemployment, twenty-five thousand. Worcester Retirement System, one million, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars. Medicare Tax, two hundred sixty-eight thousand. Streetlights, sixty thousand. Energy Consulting, four thousand. Engineering Professional Services, twenty thousand. Town Audit, thirty-one thousand. School Audit, zero. OPEB Study, one hundred, one thousand, five hundred, sorry. Legal fees, ten thousand. Tax Title, five thousand. Town Report, three thousand. Insurance Blanket, four hundred seven thousand. Insurance Deductible, five thousand. Reserve Fund, a hundred seventy-five thousand. Student Activity, zero. Future Wage Obligation, zero. Total expenses, four million, nine hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-three thousand. For the total unclassified is the four million, nine hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars. Central Purchasing. Telephone, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred. Postage, twenty-one thousand. Gasoline, two hundred thousand. Water soar, thirteen thousand. Copiers, six thousand, one hundred. Slate Roof Maintenance Plan, zero. Fleet Vehicles, zero. Window Cleaning, zero. Exterior Painting, Town Hall, Center Office Building, zero. EZ Pass, one thousand, two hundred. Electricity, eighty thousand. Trash Removal Recycling, seven thousand. Fire Extinguishers, six thousand. Total expenses, three hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. And that's the total for the central purchasing. Oh, sorry. No, the grand total on that is the thirty-eight thousand, one hundred eighteen. Thirty-eight million, one hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred twenty-two grand total on the budget. Okay, the, um. General Government Salaries. Eight million, six hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars. General Government Expenses, eight million, nine hundred eight thousand, six hundred eleven dollars. Total General Government, seventeen million, five hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars. Total on the Burgess was twelve million, six hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred thirty-nine. Total Tantascot was seven million, nine hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred one. Total Charter School, five thousand. Grand Total, thirty-eight million, one hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred twenty-six. Five hundred twenty-nine thousand. Oh, let me read that again. Always the last line item. Thirty-eight million, one hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars. Okay, there were no holes. Were there any questions?
I just got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Just to refresh my memory. Okay, so I know we did the classification and compensation study. So that kind of determines what everybody's raise is going to be. You know, they get a step for longevity. I don't have it in front of me. And then a poll, all right, cost of living. So some of them are already at the top. Is that why they got three percent? And then other department heads got the six point one.
Is Barbara online?
Yeah, but I think maybe.
I think it's based on that study. I just wanted, I just wanted it refreshed in my mind.
I think it's, well, Barbara, can, I think it's possible some.
Oh, hi, Barbara. I just want you to go over that again.
Yep, I will. Hi, everybody. So, yes, so there's, there's two different, um. Reasonings for classification. So some of the department heads, because you're talking the department head lines, correct, Mary?
Yeah, most of them are, some of them are three, like.
Yeah.
Those who have been there a little bit longer. Some are six point one.
I'm sorry.
And I noticed, like, DPW was only two point three. And then I think the police was three point one. I don't know. They were all kind of different. And I just wanted you to go over why.
Yeah, so some of the department heads receive a stepping grade.
Right.
And then some of the departments, department heads receive the merit. So the department heads that you're, you're seeing for three percent are those that get merit. And the money for the merit is in the town administrator's budget under the merit line. The twenty, the twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. So once reviews are given, those department heads will be able to get up to three percent for their merit increase.
All the department heads don't get a merit increase?
No, some of them remained on the stepping grade.
Oh, because they're not at the maximum yet, right?
Right. I wrote up.
It has nothing to do with maximum. When the, when the classification plan was redone, it was determined that. So if it was a department head that was graded in a seven or eight range, they remained on the stepping grade. And they progressed through all the steps until they maxed out. If you were in nine or above, there was no stepping grade system. There was only a minimum and a maximum assigned to the position. And then those department heads would be eligible for the stepping grade. I'm sorry, for the merit increase. That is then under the town administrator's budget. And the town administrator decides what percentage that person can receive up to three percent.
Okay, thank you. So that accounts for the ones that are only getting the three percent. I, I think, I, it is. That's okay. But why was the DPW at two point three percent?
It might just be the way the salary is, is divided. So part of the DPW's increase is under the water and the sewer budget also. So altogether, he would get a total of the three percent. And would be eligible for the merit. So that's not his total salary that you're seeing.
Right.
No, his, his increase is split up between under department head and water and sewer.
Correct.
Okay. Is that, that got, I mean, I remember doing it, but that got a little confusing, looking at the budget and seeing, you know, everybody with a different increase, you know?
Yes.
Did, I don't know if this is an appropriate question to ask. I don't care, I don't want to know who, but did everybody that was eligible for the three percent merit receive it?
That was done before my time. I haven't, I haven't done anything as far as merit increases.
I don't want to know who. I just want to know if it's a yes or a no.
The merit, the merit would have, is going to be, um. The reviews will be done end of May, beginning of June. And then those merit increases would be assigned effective July first.
Okay, so they haven't even been done yet?
No, so whether it's Bob that does it or the new town administrator, I guess whoever, whoever's in place when it needs to happen.
But you put it in the budget, I assume, assuming they got the full amount, so it's budgeted for that.
Correct, yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. That's the question that I had written to ask at our other meeting, which I totally forgot. I'm glad Mary asked it. Anything else for Barbara?
Are you staying on for when we do the warrant articles?
Yeah, yep.
I mean, you don't have to, I can ask my question now, but were you planning on staying or not?
Yes, yep.
Oh, you were, okay. So I'll wait until we get to the, to the warrant articles.
Okay, so then do we have a motion to approve the budget?
So moves.
No, you don't have to.
No.
No, no.
There's no conflict of interest. It's just a budget.
Got some salary, though?
They're still going to have substitutes, Mary. It's not like it matters. If you're not there or not, there's, you know what I mean?
You don't determine the school budget anyways.
It's not a conflict.
Okay, I just wanted to discuss that I have some subs. Okay, I'll, I'll vote on it then.
Okay, did somebody make the motion, Jamie?
I did.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Annual Town Meeting Warrants then. Okay. As usual, this is to hear the reports of the birds and, birds, boards and town officials and any other committee that may be ready or take any action thereof. Sponsor Article One is the Board of Selectmen. And the recommendation is that the town vote to approve the article as written. Now, we either vote to place, vote to place in support, or vote not to place. So somebody have a motion on Article One?
I'll make a motion to place in support Article One. Second.
Okay. Chase me in. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article Two, Sponsored Community Preservation. Let's see if the town will vote to hear and act on a report of the Community Preservation Committee on the fiscal year 2023 Community Preservation Budget. And to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund, sum of money to meet the administrative expenses and all other necessary and proper expenses of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2023. And further to reserve for future appropriation amounts as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. A sum of money for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space. A sum of money for acquisition and preservation of historic resources. And a sum of money for the creation, preservation, and support of community housing or take any action relative thereto. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to place and support Article Two.
There a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. Article Three, Community Preservation Administration Funds. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund undesignated fund balance, a sum of twenty thousand dollars to be allocated for the purpose of operating and administrative expenses in fiscal year 2023 for the Community Preservation Committee or take any action relative thereto. Sponsor again is the Community Preservation Committee. And, motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article Three. Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Article Four, Community Preservation. Debt Service. The sponsor on this is the Finance Director. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Fund undesignated fund balance, the sum of sixty-two thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars for the purpose of paying the debt service for the OSV land acquisition. Forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars for the purpose of paying the debt service for the Heinz Farm Acquisition. Ninety-five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars for the purpose of paying the debt service for the Town Hall Center Office Renovation Project. Twenty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty dollars for the purpose of paying the debt service for the recreation project or take any action relative thereto. Any questions? Motion?
I move that we place in support the article.
There a second?
I'll second that.
You choose, okay. Discussion, all in favor? Okay. Article Five, Sponsored Community Preservation Committee. Reef Storm Restoration. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund historic fund balance, the sum of nine thousand, five hundred dollars for the purpose of North Cemetery and/or Old Burial Ground. Historic preservation and restoration work includes all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action relative thereto. Any questions on it? Motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article Five.
There a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, Article Six, Community Preservation. Sponsored Town Hall Storm Windows. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund historic fund balance, a sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of funding storm windows at Town Hall to preserve the historic windows, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action relative thereto. Questions? Motion?
I move to place in support the article as written.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay, Article Seven, Community Preservation Land Survey, Nine River Road. Sponsored is the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund open space fund balance, the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of funding a land survey for a grand trunk rail root easement at Nine River Road, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action relative thereto. Questions? Motion?
I will move to place and support Article Seven.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, Article Forty-Eight. Sponsors the Community Preservation Committee. Trail and parking lot construction. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Fund open space fund balance, the sum of eighty-eight thousand dollars for the purpose of funding signage, materials, and labor for trail and parking lot construction on Community Preservation Act purchased parcels, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
I move to place in support Article Eight.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, Article Nine, Community Preservation. Town Library Restoration of Trim and Cornice Molding. This Community Preservation Committee is the sponsor. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Fund historic fund balance, a sum of sixty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the restoration of Town Library trim and cornice molding, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action relative thereto. Questions?
I'll move to place and support Article Nine.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay, Article Ten, Community Preservation. Communitywide Historic Preservation Plan. Sponsors Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund historical fund balance, the sum of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding a communitywide historic preservation plan, including all costs incidental and related thereto or take any action relative thereto. Questions? Questions?
Yeah, I will move to place in support Article Ten.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article Eleven, Community Preservation, Preservation Housing Consultant. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund housing fund balance, the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of hiring a consultant as described in the Housing Production Plan or take any action relative thereto. Questions?
Move to place and support Article Eleven.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Bob, there's just a little typo in the summary box. Says the purpose of this is to fund of.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I just have a question. Because a lot of the ones coming from the CPC have been unanimous. And I'm just curious why this was a five-three vote. What were the concerns of the people voting against it?
You know, I attended that meeting and I can't really specify what they were. I know there were two articles that were submitted by the Planning Board. I think one was a bylaw change that was voted down, but I don't know. I I thought it was a good presentation by the Planning Board. I don't, I'm not, I can't quite remember what the opposite, what the real reasons were for the opposition.
The Planning Board presented it to the CPC?
Yes.
Yeah, the other one was the funding one.
I'm sorry?
The other one was the funding one, wasn't it, that they shot down?
I think it was a bylaw.
I thought it was to put the funding into the housing, affordable housing fund, trust fund.
Yes, it was. It was, Mary. It was to put money into it. Yes, I'm still here, sorry.
Angel on my shoulder. Sorry, Barbara, go ahead.
I was just saying, you are correct. It was to put money into that fund.
Yes.
They didn't support that. Yes.
Maybe, I'm not gonna hold it up, but I would just like to know what the concerns were, maybe for the next meeting. You know, why they didn't, why they didn't vote it in. Just because it's curious. Everything else has been unanimous. And this was kind of a split vote.
Usually, if they have opposition like that, they'd have the opportunity to make a statement at the meeting itself, right?
Right.
I'm just.
Yeah, no, you're right. I just want to know what it is, because I didn't attend that meeting.
I thought it was basically there was a larger sum of money sought and that this was the amount that was approved.
They thought this was too much money?
No, no, I think there was money sought for other purposes, but this amount was, they thought it was statutorily required or something to that effect.
Well, we can find out because we don't, we don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, remember?
Do we vote on that?
No, we didn't.
Article Eleven?
We denied a question. I don't think we, I don't know.
Well, we can revote because none of us remember well. All in favor? Okay. Article Twelve, the town budget, we already voted on that. Article Thirteen, road construction repairs and maintenance. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate to the road construction repairs and maintenance count the sum of $150,000 in order to fund the road construction repairs and maintenance of town roads as determined by the DPW Director or take any action relative thereto. Questions? Mary?
So, don't we have a ton of Chapter Ninety money?
Yes, I think.
Yeah, we get Chapter.
No, I know, but I think we have a lot saved up. We need to still take more from another 150,000. I was just curious why we needed more.
Well, I believe that amount has gone down.
Yeah, no, I know. We usually take something every year, but I just thought Butch had said that, you know, we're sitting pretty good with our Chapter Ninety funds. Wasn't it like?
We are, and I think it's the Champeau Bridge.
Bridge.
It's gonna suck it all up?
Well, no, I think that that's been approved now. And the Chapter Ninety money isn't being reserved for that, so it is available now to be spent.
Okay, because that's all gonna get funded another way. Yeah, I'm just curious why we needed to take anything this year at all. It just sounded like we were pretty.
Well, we're not taking it. We're appropriating this. This isn't a transfer from the.
This is just a.
Chapter Ninety. Well, it's a raise and appropriate.
Yeah, but it's.
Right, but I'm saying, why do we even have to do that this year?
Well, it's up to you. It's the same amount as last year.
Oh, okay, we've done it before. Barbara, how long have we done it this way?
Oh, it's been a number of years. So, pre-COVID, we were, can you hear me?
Yes.
Not that well.
Okay, I kind of lost visual. Okay. Pre-COVID, we were, we were setting aside 458,000. So, this is a reduction. Again, we were, as Bob just said, we were not spending funds thinking that we needed to set, you know, put a balance aside for the Champeau Road project. And now that that's been funded, we have the opportunity to fund more road miles of improvements each year. And, I mean, we're also looking at, with anything else, the cost of paving is gonna go up as gas prices have gone up. It's all directly related, so. Oil. It's up to you, though, what you want to do. I mean, it's, it's, you know, much reduced over what it was, again, pre-COVID.
Yeah, I was just curious, because when we had our meeting, Butch made it sound like because that bridge is getting funded another way, we had a lot of Chapter Ninety money. So, when I saw this, I'm like, why do we have to raise and appropriate anything? Can't we just use all Chapter Ninety? If you don't think we can, that's fine. I know it was a reduction. I was just wondering why we needed to do it at all.
You can absolute, we can absolutely spend all the Chapter Ninety money. That's totally up to you.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I don't have a problem. It's just the way Butch presented it, like we were sitting pretty well with Chapter Ninety funds.
Well, we do, but that can get eaten up quickly.
I mean, I.
I'm not, I mean, it's only 150,000, so I'm not gonna, when it, what used to be 450? I guess I'll see after this year if we.
And the other thing is, the town gets each year Chapter Ninety funds of about 450,000, $50,000, maybe 458. I'm not sure of the exact number. I don't have that with me. But the amount of money that we get from the state is very minimal. So, we're very lucky to not only, you know, have this balance that we can start, you know, using more aggressively to pave the roads, but also, there's not a lot of communities that actually set aside additional money towards road improvements. Most or a lot of communities that are the size of Sturbridge use the money that they get each year from Chapter Ninety, and that's it. So, again.
No, I know. I thought Butch had said, I can't find my notes now, but I thought he said we almost had four million saved up.
We do. It's around four million, yes.
I don't know. With four million, I'd be inclined not to have any raise and appropriate on the roads this year, but that's just me. Because we've got four million and we get 400,000 every year. I just feel like we're piling it up and maybe we can make it a little bit easier on people and not have to raise it. Well, I mean.
It's a drop in the bucket, but I mean.
It's a drop in the bucket, but we do have four million saved up, you know? And we were saving it for a reason, and now we don't have that bridge to repair anymore.
No, but we've got two other bridges that aren't in much better shape. The Holland Road Bridge and the Fakwa Road Bridge.
And it's a relatively discreet spend. That's a third of what it was previously, so.
So, somebody want to make a motion?
Yes, I will move to place in support Article Thirteen.
Seriously? Ian? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Three to one. Okay, Article Fourteen, Public Access Department. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund the sum of $135,723 or take any action relative thereto. Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. This is for estimated budget for fiscal year 23. Salary and wages, $85,723. Longevity, $300. Employee benefits, $25,000. Operating expenses, $19,200. Capital, $5,500 for a total of $135,723. And this money comes from the surcharge on people's cable bills. People want to know where the money comes from. Any questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I move to place in support Article Fourteen.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article Fifteen, Sturbridge Tourist Association. See if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate from the hotel slash motel special account to the Sturbridge Tourist Association account the sum of $181,749. for the estimated budget in that of community support, $29,000. Marketing, $112,978. Salary and wages, $31,471. Employee benefits, $8,300 for a total of $181,749. And this comes from the hotel motel tax that we have a 6% tax on. And 67.5 goes to the general fund and 16.25 goes to the Sturbridge Tourist Association. And the other.
Easy for you to say.
Yeah, I know. You haven't read all those numbers. And the other 16.25 goes to the Betterment. Any questions on that?
I have a question.
Mary?
Barbara, maybe you can answer it. Last year, did the STA use all their community support money? Or did some of it end up not getting dispersed? If you know.
I don't know, Mary. I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because I know the Special Events Committee went in and made a request for, I thought, a very reasonable amount of money for an ice sculptor. And I know there was some concern and hesitation about supporting it. So, I don't know if, you know, the 29,000 is expended every year or, or what? Because that seems like a good amount that they have available to give back. So, I would be curious last year if they spent the full amount and what events did they support in town besides the Harvest Fest?
Okay, I'll get back to you on that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article Fifteen.
Second.
Oh. Yep, sorry. That was Chase.
Yep.
Ian? Discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article Sixteen, Betterment. This is where the other 16.25 goes. See if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate from the hotel motel special account to the Betterment account for the sum of $181,749. The items under this include flower barrels for 2,200. Plantings for the Bloom Committee, $5,775. Beautification, Joshua High Library, $4,300. Wayfinding, streetscape improvements, $15,229. Beautification at Town Hall and Center Office Building, $2,500. Tree planting, ABD program, $1,500. Town offices and library decorations, $4,000. Lawn care, Town Common and Town Buildings, $5,000. Sidewalk maintenance, $10,000. Sidewalk salt spreader, $3,500. Tree maintenance, Townwide, $10,000. Town Common tree maintenance, $5,000. Main Street tree and park maintenance, $2,000. Special event overtime for police, $10,000. ATV for access to trails, $12,965. Bolo wrap, $3,338. Protective firefighting gear, $13,500. Special events overtime fire department, $8,333. Blitzfire monitor, $4,853. Cedar Lake Town Beach water treatment, $1,795. Town Common summer concerts, $4,000. Decorations for Town Common, $4,445. Turnus Field dugouts, $11,440. Recreation shed, $5,235. Bleachers, Town Barn and Fields, $16,364. Pet waste eliminator, waste stations, $8,200. Slack, Great Ponds Weed and Safety Program, $6,000. Town bonfire funding, $2,000. Funding for special events in the community, $6,000. Shed construction, $1,900. It's on the Riverlands. Traffic IR counters, two of them, $1,280 for a total of $1,181,749. Okay, any questions? Mary?
Everyone's gonna be like, geez, she comes back, she's all questions. Do we always, we might, I just, I'm just curious. Do we always have to take from Betterment things like lawn care for the Town Common and sidewalk maintenance? That's not usually included in our DPW budget? So, that, that month, that 15,000 can get freed for, like, beautification or recreation issue? I don't know. Some of that, I thought, would, would be part of the DPW budget.
Kind of had the same thought about the police and fire equipment, too, that, why that's not part of their budget.
I feel like we're starting to, um.
Like, why isn't ATV not part of it?
Well, ask Barbara.
I can't hear. Ian, I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I was just curious about the Police and Fire Department purchases and why those wouldn't be part of their budget.
I mean, they could be, but typically each year there are items that are purchased. So, this is, this is not.
It's not out of the norm.
This is normal. The sidewalk maintenance, that's been funded forever, pretty much as long as I can remember.
The lawn care, too, on the Town Common?
The lawn care on the Town Common, I think that that's new this year. Hold on one second. Let me just.
I guess, like, my overall impression is, I feel like Betterment Committee, the Betterment funds are, are extra funds to kind of do things that are more beautification, recreation, like a direct benefit to residents.
And public safety.
And public safety, but, I mean, you know, sidewalk maintenance. To me, that's like quintessential. It should be in the DPW budget. We shouldn't have to take it from our Betterment.
So, one of the issues with the sidewalk maintenance is.
Well, I'm sorry, the lawn care. Like, I assume lawn care, that's like mowing the lawn, right, on the common?
I think it's from the commons destruction by the.
They're gonna start treating the, um, they're gonna start treating the lawn, I believe.
So, even when the kids were out there, when I walked over, kids were out playing soccer on it. And then we have the, I know that the farmer's market's hard on it. So, I think generally, although.
There's a lot more.
Yeah, even though I'm sure you, there's some gray area where you could switch into budget or not. Generally, these are all going towards things that are quality of life sort of projects.
Oh, I agree.
But even, but like.
I was trying to free up more money for, like, more quality of life stuff as opposed to stuff that.
But these are all.
It should be in our budget, in the DPW budget.
Yeah, but all the.
High products of it.
Yeah, all the departments had their suggestions, and they had more than one suggestions. And the Betterment Committee went through them all. And some things were eliminated and some money was reduced and shifted around, too, for that very reason. But, you know, the committee really studied.
How much is the one you're looking at, Mary? Because I'm not seeing that one. How much was the lawn care?
What, Barbara?
I can't, how much was the one you're asking me about, the lawn care? It's just not jumping out at me. Where is it on the list?
It's on the, on page 10, if you looked, one, two, three, four, five lines down from the top. It's lawn care, Town Common and Town Buildings, and the amount of $5,000, $10,000 in sidewalk maintenance, and then $3,500 in salt spreader.
Yeah, so the lawn care for the Town Common and the Town Buildings, that's a new item this year? Sorry, I was looking.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be done. Don't get me wrong. I'm just saying. I'm just saying that was $5,000, that we could have maybe extended our concerts and done something.
Right, so it's to include fertilizer...
That enhances quality of life more than, you know, lawn treatment that we should, that should be part of the DPW budget. I don't know. Anyway, I kind of agree with Ian on some of the...
Well, mine was more police and fire.
And I don't believe that's been done in the past. And then the sidewalk maintenance, we actually set aside those funds from year to year. So we're not actually repairing portions of the sidewalk every year. We carry that money forward. What's been happening, or what was found years ago, was when you only have, when you're trying to get a contractor to come out and repair only, you know, a small amount of the sidewalk, we couldn't get people interested in actually coming out and doing the job. So we're building up a pot of money and then replacing more blocks of the sidewalk at a time.
And maybe part of that sidewalk maintenance can be to repair that sidewalk that goes down the middle of our common. That's in really bad shape.
I haven't noticed it.
No. Could be brick or... Anyway. Okay, thank you.
Used to be dirt.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, didn't used to be there. Okay, do we have a motion then on Article 16?
I move to place and support.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Maybe you can just give us a list of the things that were submitted for Betterment that got rejected.
Okay.
Yeah, this whole package.
No, I know, it's everybody's wish list, but I'm just curious what didn't get through.
Okay, Article 17, capital improvement plan. Sponsors the Board of Selectmen to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash and appropriate the sum of $522,902 to transfer from the ambulance stabilization account and appropriate the sum of $223,000 for the purpose of funding the following items, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto from the capital improvement plan to be undertaken for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022. The items include ambulance, $375,000. Plotter, $13,522. Cisco switches, $38,621. Fire hose, $74,000. Climate vent exhaust system addition, $19,580. Turnout gear slash hose storage, $11,500. DPW black hole with attachments, $200,000. Police, six rifles and magazines, $6,150. IT security cameras, $8,024 for a total of $745,902. Questions?
I have a question.
Mary?
Barbara, I think you already answered this when we were doing the ARPA, but I just forgot what the answer was. The HVAC system for the library, was that considered by the capital committee?
It was discussed, but at the point in time when the capital committee was meeting, we didn't have a price. So the capital committee was aware that there would, you know, there was a good potential of there being a warrant article. At that point in time, it was thought that the cost was about $600,000. So I think at this point, we still don't know what the actual cost is.
And, okay. And the backhoe for $200,000? When's the last time we bought a backhoe?
Hold on. It's replacing a 1997 backhoe.
All set, Mary?
Yeah, I guess. I just feel like the HVAC system's probably more of a priority than some of these things, but it didn't get funded at all in capital. And now it's going to be all free cash.
The capital item is all free cash.
I know. What I'm saying is that, and I don't... It's not like I have a background in anything, but the HVAC system seemed to me more of a priority maybe than some of these things. I don't know. But yeah, it didn't get funded at all because I guess we weren't ready to do it.
Right.
No, the capital committee felt that it should be a warrant article and not part of the capital plan because of the price tag involved with that. And so now we're looking, you know, I don't know what the price is going to end up being, but at this point, you know, it could be closer to a million dollars. So depending on what, whether there's ADA and other issues that might have to be addressed. So they were supportive of the project. It just, they felt that it should be a warrant article.
Yeah, and most of the high-cost items in this are seem necessary to me. Like the ambulance, the Cisco switches, you know, I have to defer to the IT department on that. Fire hose, the backhoe, if they're replacing a 1997 machine, that also...
Plus, the fire hose too has only so many years of good use.
No, I'm okay with it now. But at first, I thought the HVAC was maybe more important than the new backhoe. But, you know, I didn't know that it was 25 years old. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, I think as Barbara explained, it was two reasons. One, even when we were, before the price went up to where it is now, would have used up most of the capital. So it was thought that it should be a warrant article. Plus, it seemed like the price, that's when it was sort of in flux and we just needed to nail down a number. And we still haven't nailed down a number.
No, I'm okay with it.
Does somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article 17.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 18, sponsor Board of Selectmen, ambulance stabilization fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to the ambulance stabilization fund for the purpose of reserving funds for the future purpose of an ambulance, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action relative thereto. Question? Motion?
I move to place and support Article 18.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 19, capital stabilization fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $188,000 to the capital stabilization fund, or take any action relative thereto sponsors of Board of Selectmen. Question? Motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article 19. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 20, fire vehicle stabilization fund, sponsor Board of Selectmen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $50,000 to the fire vehicle stabilization fund for the purpose of reserving funds for the future purpose of major fire apparatus, including the payment of all costs incidental and relative thereto, or take any action relative thereto. Questions?
Yeah, Bob, I assumed that the, based upon the box at the bottom, that it said $7,350. And I'm assuming that's from the purchase of the new fire truck?
Spent it all last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever, yeah, that's $7,000.
Yeah, sorry, that's why it's so depleted. Okay, I think that's, never mind. I'll move the place and support.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 21, OPEB trust fund, sponsor Board of Selectmen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund account, or take any action relative thereto. Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article 21. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 22, sponsor Board of Selectmen, revaluation interim adjustments, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $20,000 to the revaluation/interrum adjustments count, or take any action relative thereto. Questions?
I'll place and support Article 22.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 23, revolving funds spending limits. See if the town will vote, Board of Selectmen sponsors, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, to set the fiscal year 23 spending limits for certain revolving funds as following, or take any action relative thereto. Okay, recreation is $30,000. Hazmat cleanup, $20,000. Border health, $20,000. Border health pay-as-you-throw program, $20,000. Senior center, $10,000. Planning department, $10,000. Public lands, $20,000. Sturbridge Tourist Association, $20,000. CPR, $5,000. House numbering, $5,000. Any questions?
I just had a quick one.
Mary?
Is this the same revolving fund as last year? Did any of them go up, or are they all level funded?
They're all the same.
They're all the same? Okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to place and support the article.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 24, Water Department, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate through the fixing and collection of just-in-equitable prices and rates set by the Board of Selectmen, acting as water commissioners, a sum of $1,391,41 for the expenses of the Water Department, or take any action relative thereto. Okay, contract operations, $739,081. Electricity, $80,000. Per chlorate testing, $10,000. DPW director, $15,019. Meter maintenance, $10,000. Billing expenses, $6,500. Debt service, $392,841. Miscellaneous, $35,100. Capital replacement, $52,500. $52,000, sorry. Reserve amount, $50,000 for a total of $1,391,41. Questions? Motion?
I'll move to support Article 24.
Going to place it too?
Place and support. I'll second that.
Okay, Article 25, Sewer Department.
Did we vote on that?
Oh, no, we didn't. Thank you, Jamie. All in favor? And it's only 10 minutes, babe.
It feels later to say.
I think it's from the content of the meeting.
I think it was a long day yesterday.
I was up late yesterday. Looking, I'm thinking, is it 10 of 10 by now? But no, it's only 10 of 8.
Right.
Thought it was 20 of 10.
You actually went to bed late?
I went to bed late, yeah, because I was... I wrapped up, yeah.
Okay, Article 25, Sewer Department, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate through fixing and collection of just-in-equitable prices and rates set by the Board of Selectmen, acting as sewer commissioners, a sum of $2,780,906 for the expenses of the Sewer Department, or take any action relative thereto. Estimated budget for fiscal year 23 is contract operations, $958,056. Electricity, $210,000. Chemicals, $25,000. DPW director, $15,019. Billing expense, $5,000. Debt service, $831,181. Southbridge fees, $215,000. Liquid sludge handling, $200,000. Miscellaneous, $196,650. Capital replacement, $95,000. Reserve account, $50,000 for a total of $2,780,906. Okay, any questions?
I will move to place and support Article 25.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Ian?
Nope, I was just getting ready to vote. Making sure you're remembered.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, Article 26, Sewer Project Debt Service, sponsors the finance director, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $131,100 from the fund balance reserved for Sewer Betterments to the Big Alum Sewer Debt Account, and $47,300 from the fund balance reserved for Sewer Betterments to the Woodside Westwood Sewer Debt Account, for the purpose of paying debt service due on these sewer projects for fiscal year 23, or take any action relative thereto. Any questions? Motion?
I will move to place and support Article 26.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Article 27. Who's the sponsor on this one, Bob? It doesn't say. It can be you. Okay. So we'll put in Board of Selectmen. Okay, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the water tank maintenance account, number 29520, the sum of $6,000 to power wash algae growth off of fiscal Insanians water tanks, including all costs incidental and relative thereto, or take any action relative thereto. Questions? Motion?
Make a motion to place and support Article 27.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Did one get left out? I see pipe coating maintenance program as a title.
Yeah, this is...
It skips the 28.
Yeah, it should be 28.
Yeah, this one's not numbered, Board of Pipe Coating.
Okay.
So this one should be 28.
It's going to shift every other one now?
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, because we're not done, we still have...
I just didn't know if it was easier to make pipe coating maintenance last to save all the editing.
Well, it's nice to keep them all together on subject matter. Article 28, pipe coating, I imagine, we're the, yeah, we're the sponsors, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the sewer reserve fund balance, the sum of $90,000 for an inflow and infiltration study and necessary repairs identified from the study for municipal sewer system, or take any action relative thereto. Any questions? Motion?
I move to place and support Article 28.
Second.
Is that Ian? Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay, this will be Article 29, sponsors Burgess School Committee, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 for the purchase and installation of a modular trailer for school bus transportation operations, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any action relative thereto. Any questions?
Actually, Mary, is this something that ARPA thought about on spending? Because I know we funded it with COVID money for two years and then...
I don't think we...
Now it seems like an opportunity to...
I don't think we even discussed this as a possibility. Nothing was presented to us for it. So, I mean, it's something that we could consider when we get the next round of funding in the fall for 1.4 million.
Seems like something that was led...
Seems like something that was led by COVID, kind of, when we started doing it because we needed to segregate the bus drivers and now we're
Right.
kind of in the long game of it.
I mean...
Yeah, this is a one-time purchase here.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I mean, do you want us to, is this something that...
No, I was curious if it'd come up.
No, I mean, if it's something that could be put off, then we're not taking away our free cash. We're using ARPA money.
Even if we approve it today and then we go to ARPA, then the ARPA money would cover us and we wouldn't spend our money.
Can I, I have to walk away for a second. I'm sorry, I had to plug in my laptop. But I, so I missed what you were saying at the beginning, but the, so the trailer, this trailer that was purchased or leased, we started leasing it with CARES Act money and then when the CARES Act money ran out in December of 2021, the school committee voted to continue to pay for it until the end of the school year. So, if we're going to move forward with keeping this trailer, I think they're not going to allow us to just keep the one we have. We're actually going to have to buy a different trailer. But we're looking to continue and have that trailer in place probably before, you know, we don't want to have to have the one that's there hauled away and then have nothing to put in its place. So, I'm not sure the timing of the second round of the ARPA funds is going to be ideal to make this work.
Thank you, Barbara.
And the school committee doesn't want to, they paid through it through 2021?
They paid it from January of 2022 till the end of the school year.
But they don't want to continue within their budget to do it?
No, so I think one of the things too is it's been determined that it makes sense to have a trailer there to house the busing employees. And so, you know, instead of paying a lease month to month, it just kind of makes sense at this point to just purchase a trailer and own it ourselves, seeing as, you know, when we started leasing the trailer, it seemed like it was just going to be for a short period of time. But now they've come to determine that it actually makes sense to keep the setup that they have now.
Did we end up giving CARES money back?
We did.
So, how much did we give back?
I believe it's about $220,000.
So, I mean, I'm just saying, if we would have had a little more forethought, we could have bought it with the CARES money for $220,000 because we ended up giving it back.
CARES money was the way you could spend it.
I don't know.
No, no, but this was a legitimate use of it because we leased it. And now we're saying we want it all the time, so let's purchase it. But we ended up giving back $220,000 of CARES money. It's just unfortunate.
I don't know.
I know it's done now, but I mean, the time to have bought it would have been nice to use federal money instead of ours.
I'm just saying, though, I don't know with 100% confidence right now that I, I don't know the answer as to whether it would have been an allowable expense with the CARES Act funding to buy it as a permanent thing. I'm just not sure.
Yeah, but it was legitimate to lease it.
What?
It was a legitimate use of CARES money to lease it.
It was, but there was different rules in place and I just can't answer that question right now.
No worries.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then on Article 29?
Yes, I move to place and support Article 29.
I'll second that.
Okay, Chase, was that you?
Yeah.
The voices down there keep changing.
They're growing up.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 30, capital planning bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend the Sturbridge General Bylaws by adding the following capital improvement plan, planning committee bylaw as Article 3 in Chapter 19 or take any action relative thereto. Bob, I was going to let you instead of...
This is something that I had mentioned to the board and would at least suggest that the board and the town consider adopting for a number of reasons. One is I think that we're having some difficulty finding even a procedure for capital planning, even for appointments to the committee. Can't find an actual structured capital plan. We have a capital committee that's largely made up of department heads that I don't think you would find in many communities. So, the purpose of the plan is to be able to plan out for five or so years. You would be able to predict your expenditures. You'd be able to tie that into the debt schedule to figure out how you were going to pay for it. Plus, I think on top of that, what I'm finding, and if you look at some of the articles here and some of the placeholders, there just seem to be a number of capital projects that just seem to appear. And all of a sudden, they're, you know, it's necessary to fund them or else we're going to have some issues. And this would certainly go a long way to help you plan this out, be able to get more information, to be able to figure out how it's going to be financed, whether it's going to be, you know, debt exclusion, what, free cash, what have you. I think this is the type of thing that's in most, if not all, communities. I know that there are some issues here that need to be, I just pasted this in here for the board's consideration. It says school superintendent. I know that you can look at this and have whatever makeup you want of the committee, but I would suggest it be something pretty close that's contained within here and it lays out the procedure. And I think this would go a long way in helping you have a smoother, more planned-out capital process.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to read it?
I have. I have some questions if I may. It seems to be a large board. That's my, is the section one, just, I don't know if that's a bad thing, but it's a lot of, you know, folks from different...
Yeah, planning board and school.
Yeah, so it's, which, I don't know if that's bad. I don't know if that's good. It's just, it's a lot of conversation sometimes where...
Yeah, works out.
So, what's the sort of logic there, I guess, is the, is that a standard sort of size? Are the ones that, have you seen ones that are smaller, ones that are larger?
Well, I think so, but I think also, sort of like a finance committee, if you have a certain number of members, then they can be liaisons to different boards and, you know, do some research and come back and give each particular capital request, you know, a more detailed and thought-out presentation. But like I said, I mean, I'm not even expecting you to act on this tonight. You still have time, but it's something to think about. You could modify however you like.
Yeah, no, and I don't know that I have a strong position on it because it seems like what this board... So, not to be regular, but below a large capital threshold, so to need broader sort of process and to then kind of report, to report back in an unbiased way to basically us. The, kind of the theory here, right? Is that the...
Right, the selectmen and the finance.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Of course, the community preservation makeup is
Large, too.
is large also. Planning board has what?
The planning board has one, too, yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm not, I don't know if I'm...
No, but we can, we can hold on this one and, you know, read through and if we have any...
Yeah, I probably have other questions, but I don't, we don't have to do it right now.
Yeah, this is meant to give you the basic structure, you know, however the board wants to change it, the size, the, you know, the at-large members, the membership, what have you, can be modified. It's just meant to provide the basic structure and at least, you know, help you put something in place that would help you with your capital planning.
No, the process point makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, so we can...
I just wanted to...
Mary?
Yeah, no, I think it's a very good idea. I think at one time we must have had something because we know...
No, we've never had anything written.
Well, no, maybe, well...
It all just happened.
Yeah, but at some point, because we, I'm not saying we know where it is, but I think there had to be some basic structure because we know who's on it and we also know that it has to be beyond a certain amount of money.
Oh, we know that.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is at some point, something was written down. Because I remember being on finance saying, well, you need a certain amount of money for it to be considered a capital improvement.
At a state law?
And I think it was, is it by state law, $10,000 or something?
But that's, yeah, that's always been written, but who's on the committee has just been, I want to say, you know, grab four or five people and go through this.
That I don't know. Is this what you used, you were in Gardner, Leicester, I'm sorry?
This is largely from Leicester.
This is from Leicester.
I think, I think just to answer your point, Mary, I think the capital process you have now is largely, this is the way we've always done it.
Right. So, at some point, they had to, even if it was verbal, it had to be some structure when they first formed the capital committee, which was before my time. But they must have had some guidelines at some point in time. We just don't know where they are.
No, when you talk to people, nobody seems to know.
No, I know. If you don't know, I mean, you go a lot further back than I do. But no, I think, but one thing I think would be good of...
Don't laugh, Carol. You go back just as far.
I guess I didn't mean to set you up for that. So, a seven-person board and someone we should just check and make sure, like, the school superintendent or designee of the school wants to be a part of the, because I don't think anybody is.
I can't imagine they wouldn't.
Right, no, I know, but it's a different...
Because they do bring capital projects forward to us.
They're not usually on our committees. They usually have their own. So, I was just saying, before we, you know, go and adopt it at town meeting out of courtesy, someone should talk to the school superintendent, make sure they're on board with it.
I can do that, yeah. But like I said, however...
No, I think it makes sense. I'm just saying, we don't want to pass something and then Deb Boyd saying, oh, I didn't know you think about it.
Yeah. No, I think that kind of goes, that was my question about the size, too, because the selectmen and the fincom theoretically, unlike other groups, are going to have a more of a neutral financial interest because we're all across the town. Most of the other groups just aren't.
You're not the head of a department.
Exactly. Or you're the head of all that, I don't know how you define it, right?
Oh, they all work for the TA.
Exactly.
Okay, Article 31 it is now.
Mary? Can I make a comment?
What's that?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
So, I just want you guys to know that the capital planning process is actually spelled out in our fiscal management policies.
Yes.
So, there, I haven't actually taken what we have and compared it to the language in what Bob is proposing, but I do think it's important. I mean, we do have fiscal policies in place that spell out a lot of the different steps and the funding requirements for capital. So, I mean, one thing is in our policies, it's an expenditure of $5,000 or more. In the proposed language here, it's $10,000. Also, the school department actually funds their capital needs for the most part out of their budgets. And so, I, with the exception of this trailer, and once in a while, I think several years ago, they came forward to the town to, for an article from free cash to buy some computers. For the most part, we don't see the school getting involved with our capital process. They just, they don't submit items. So, I do think that this needs to be talked about a little, just to make sure it adheres to what we already have in writing, or we would have to rewrite our fiscal policies also. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Can you send that, could you, could you send us that, what we already have in terms of what a capital committee is? More than $5,000?
Yeah, the only thing that I do agree is we don't have, and this is one of the things that, you know, Bob had asked me when he got here, is, you know, what determines the makeup of those people that participate as members of the capital committee? And that definitely isn't spelled out. It's been the same makeup since I've been here. That's not saying it's right or wrong, other than I think at a minimum, you know, we would definitely want to probably at least memorialize who the membership would be going forward so that there's no question. But yes, I will send the fiscal policies to you.
Because, you know, with the superintendent, if they're used to funding their capital through their own budget, when we include them in ours, it's kind of like setting the precedent that now we will start funding capital projects of the schools. I just don't know. It might give that appearance, you know what I mean? If they've managed over the years to fund their capital projects with their own budget and then we bring it in, just something to think about, that we bring them in.
I mentioned when I started talking about it, the membership included school superintendent. So, that's one of the things among, among anything here that can be modified by the board.
In Leicester, do they...
It's not a regional school, so it's...
Oh, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different. Okay.
Okay, so we'll get the information and we'll read over this and discuss it. Okay, Article 31 then is, am I numbering right?
Yep, 31, you're right.
You are.
I know, I thought we were only one off, but...
I put 31, too.
Yeah. Acceptance of extension of Hillside Drive to see if the sponsors Board of Selectmen, to see if the town will vote to accept as a public way an extension of the roadway known as Hillside Drive as such extension has been heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen in the location depicted as parcel A, 12,879 square feet on the plan entitled Lot Division Planned Land in Sturbridge, Mass., prepared for Charles D. McDevitt Revocable Trust and NCA McDevitt Revocable Trust owners dated March 15, 2018, prepared by Roger Woods and Company, prepared for, prepared for the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 933 Pl. 112, a copy of which has been placed in the file with the town clerk, and to authorize Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase gift eminent domain or otherwise interests in land sufficient to provide for the use and maintenance of said way for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Sturbridge or take any action relative thereto. Okay, questions? Bob, this...
You may recall, this was on the last meeting. And apparently there were some issues in getting this recorded. So, according to council, it has to come back again. And also, you'll be having to have another layout hearing on this because I think there's been a slight change in the payment after the work was completed. And so, we'll try and set that up for the first meeting in May.
That's good. Any questions from the board?
Somebody want to... We put Article 29 twice. I just figured that out.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to place and support Article 31.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 32 Tax Increment Financing Agreement and Project Certification for Noble Energy, to see if the town will vote to approve and certify the local incentive application submitted for a $15,803 square foot building located at 201 Charlton Road as shown on the project certification application. This building will include a 6,846 square foot electric voltage learning center, a 3,031 square foot restaurant, 2,798 square feet for shared offices for Noble Energy in Nichols College to support student employment and training, and 3,128 square feet for common areas. This is a recourse to authorize Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax increment financing agreement, also known as a TIF, pursuant to provisions of General R. Chapter 40, Section 59, with Noble Energy or its acceptable designee, all and substantially the form submitted to this town meeting, copy of which has been placed on file with the town clerk. Such approval serving to conform the, to confirm the information contained in the project certification application that one, the project is proposed is consistent with the town's economic development obligations and can reasonably be expected to benefit significantly from the tax increment financing agreement. Two, the project will not overburn the town's infrastructure and utilities serving the Economic Opportunity Area. And three, the project as described in the public certification application will have a reasonable chance of increasing employment opportunities and to authorize designation of the project as a certified project for a term of 10 years and a tax increment financing plan of not more than 10 years, provided for real estate tax exemptions at the following exemption rate on the added value resulting from the project. And there's the table there. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question about the table. It's 100% year one and then 90% two. Is that what we agreed to or is that a typo? That's all?
No, that's what was...
Okay, I just, I just looked at it.
Yeah, and with, I do know Terry Masterson is going to have a chart on... Yeah. And with, I do know Terry Masterson is going to have a chart on all the TIFs we have, and the percentages. They're not all exactly the same.
Usually we get a copy of the, of the agreement itself, right? Before, it's just put in the, did we get a copy of that agreement? You know what I mean? It doesn't, usually we get a copy of the tax incentive contract with them.
I don't remember.
I think I remember approving Terry to do it, negotiated.
Right, but then come forward, because I remember in the past, when Kevin did it, we always looked at it, and every now and then, we, you know, found a couple of mistake, you know, things that we changed. I don't want to say mistakes, but things we changed, or rather than just having it come up as a warrant article, because we didn't even see what the tax incentive agreement is. Am I wrong? I know that in the past-
I don't know. I don't remember seeing the others.
No, they, they come forward, because when we did it with OSV's, Pledge, came forward at the same time, the professional office building, and they each were a little different, and we looked at them after they were negotiated.
Both cold storage came before us.
Yeah.
We saw what we were getting in personal property, and we saw what we were getting in.
Yeah, it just wasn't a warrant article.
Yeah, well, Terry I know is going to have that, too. If you want to hold on to-
I would like to see the actual agreement.
I think we maybe do that at the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, because the public house has one, too.
Because that's why, I feel like the other ones all went, you know, started at 100 and went 10% a year, down to 10%. This one kind of ends on 20, so they're getting a little extra.
I'm sorry, did you say you wanted someone to come into the next meeting?
Well, just if we have the written, you know, yeah, Ian and Terry can get it.
Because we, yeah. We've also looked at, I'm not saying I'm going to be opposed to this, but we had a checklist. It wasn't like an automatic stamp, and everybody would get a TIF. We did have like a checklist of, you know, whether there was a financial need for it, and the amount of employees, and-
It lays that out in the statement.
Yeah. Well-
Economic opportunity area.
Yeah, it asserts it, that you don't really see the explanation, right?
But we'll get what information we can get. Okay, Article 33. There's no sponsor?
Oh, sorry, I think this would be the planning board.
Okay. Okay, this is Affordable Housing Trust by law, to see if the town will vote to insert the following Sturbridge Municipal Affording Housing Trust by law in the following location within the general bylaw of the town of Sturbridge. Division 1 bylaws, Part 1 Administrative Legislation, Chapter 7 Boards, Commissions, and Committees, insert a new Article 10 Sturbridge Municipal Affordable Housing Trust or take any action thereto. Okay. Have people had time, time to read this, because it's-
Who, who is sponsoring this one?
Anybody.
So I would request that Gene come in and, and explain it to us, highlight it, and, yeah, because that's what we've done in the past, rather than us just digesting it and-
Was it unanimous by the planning board? That would be my, did they vote on this already?
Oh, it was unanimous.
Okay, yeah, that's-
So, okay.
And it's very long, and-
Involved.
It's their, it's their warrant article, so I think they should explain it to us.
And the lawyers are saying it's a lot of legal.
Okay, and then Article 34 is a petitioned article, to see if the town of Sturbridge will adopt a resolution in support of the work of the special commission relative to the seal and motto of the Commonwealth established by a resolve of the General Court in 2020, and appointed by Governor Baker to recommend changes to the current flag and seal of Massachusetts, and in support of a new seal and motto for the Commonwealth that may better reflect our aspirations for harmonious and respectful relations between all people who now call Massachusetts home or tenny, or take any action relative thereto. Because it's a petition article, it has to be placed. So, somebody want to make that motion?
Yeah, I will move into, move in to place and support Article 34.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second Jamie's motion.
Okay, discussion?
I think this is happening already, right? I think Baker said he wanted to change the seal and the flag. So I think that that's-
It's like us making a statement of support.
Jamie, you, you know, you know all about the flag. You learned it in third grade.
I think, I'm just, I'm guessing, curious if we even have any say. It's more the point, they change the Commonwealth seal and flag.
It's just us giving a thumbs up in the back, you know?
But I'm happy to support it. It does seem dated.
Okay, so we have a motion to place in support. Oh, no, to place. Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, then he placed and he supported it, right?
Yeah, I placed and supported, but we can displace, it doesn't matter.
Well, I'm not going to support it.
Okay, so we're going to displace.
Jamie decided to displace.
I'll still second.
All in favor?
You don't want to see the change? Are you just waiting for it to happen at the state level? I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, this doesn't give any information. I mean, it's very broad. You know, a resolution, what is the resolution?
Oh, you want to know what the new seal and motto is?
Yeah, how they want to change it, you know?
So, I'm sorry, what was the motion? Did you vote to support?
Place.
No, I just, I just place. We'll displace it for-
Okay.
Okay, and Bob, you have comments on some of the-
Well, the rest of them are placeholders. I think several of them, I believe I know where the board is, is going on this. I'm sure you're going to be supporting 501 Main, I can write that one up. 8 Brookfield, we've issued the request for bids. 7 Main, we can talk about, the owner has been given a purchase and sale agreement. The Main Street Pump Station is scheduled to have a deep dive at your next meeting on the 19th. Tag and Bond will be participating, if not here, then remotely, so you can hear more about that project. And this is another one of the capital projects that I alluded to earlier, that now suddenly there's a time crunch on this because of the 25-year agreement expiring. Similarly with the library HVAC. I mean, I can, whatever action you want to take on these, but I can pretty easily write up pretty much all of these placeholders. The next ones, the, the filter and the generator are fairly new. But again, we're hearing that there's some import here and a time crunch on getting these done, so that the plants can keep operating properly.
But, you know, and I've questioned this before, too, that they should, they have maintenance in their accounts. They also have capital replacements. Here it's $95,000 and $95,000. I mean, it's, they have to weigh everything. You did request from them a list of all repairs and stuff, right?
Well, I had asked for, and when Butch is back on Thursday, we'll be going over it, just a, a general outline of outstanding capital items. I think there's been a procedure up to this point where the capital plan for sewer and water has been pretty much year to year. And I've talked to them and have a draft of something that sort of projects out a little farther than that, but as part of the discussion on the 19th, where there will be more of a, a discussion about where we're going, particularly with sewer, that I can have that for the board, and you can have an idea of how all this is going to, going to fit together, and what the landscape is for sewer and water over the next several years. Now, again, it's not an engineered plan, and I was pretty clear with Shane and Butch that this is, you know, we're just picking numbers here, so nothing for them to be held to, but it's to give the board an idea of just where we're going with sewer and water, in particular, what some of the capital needs are going to be over the next few years.
Okay. And we also had that from Community Preservation, an article for 70 Cedar Street.
Yes. I have it written down. That didn't make it to the, to the placeholder. It should be there.
I think that's Open Space Committee. Is it the Open Space Committee?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. And I think, and I think, Bob, she, the Open Space Committee already drafted the actual warrant article. Oh, no, I know, but you drafted some language.
Yeah, we saw that last time, but we had to-
Give to Bob.
Yeah, we have to see. Yeah.
No, I have it. I have it.
Yeah.
And also on the sewer part, can we get the contract with Southbridge, the, the one that's expiring?
Certainly, yeah.
Copy of the contract?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was just wondering about that. I don't know what my, just, just going to throw some thoughts out. Should we, should that be something that we bring forward more at this, at a special town meeting in the fall, once we know where negotiations may or may not go with Southbridge, so we can make an informed decision? Or do we want to have that in place, so that when we go to Southbridge, we say that, well, we've got the money in place to, because I'm not going to necessarily, like, vote in favor of it unless I know this is a better course of action than another contract with Southbridge. And I don't know how we can know that if we haven't sat down with Southbridge yet and figure out, because I know you said that they want us to contribute to their capital, which is different. We've only been contributing $215,000 a year. So I just want to know more about what we could get with Southbridge, so I can make an educated decision about whether we move forward with a 4.2 pump station.
We did have another meeting with Southbridge last week.
Okay.
Virtual meeting. And you're right about capital. That was a concern of ours. Our understanding, and Barbara was part of the meeting, she can correct me if I'm wrong, is that I think Southbridge's concern about capital was if, if Sturbridge was going to be adding significantly to the, to the flow, and they were going to, it was going to necessitate any changes in their infrastructure. But what they told us, and what we understood from the meeting, was that a 2% increase, at least for next year, and I guess for the foreseeable years, is a pretty reliable number.
Okay, so there, that's very different than what we've been talking about. Is, right, am I, maybe I'm-
Yeah, no.
It, it, because we, what we've been talking about is that we were concerned that we were going to have to put into the capital project is in Southbridge. But if we're talking about 2% growth over a year and not having to do a $4.2 million capital project when we have, I believe, space in sewer here.
And I think we should have valued it, but it doesn't- Shane had said that, he kind of pitched it as, that if we are keeping it in-house, paying, you know, sewer rate to ourselves, and that over the course of the contract, that this would benefit. And I think that, and again, that's, I think-
It would be nice to see the contract. Also, did you say Southbridge is concerned about how much we'll be sending to them as far as flow?
No, I think that, I think that, I was just answering the concern about capital, and they felt that, you know, that issue had come about, is if we were going to be seeing any developments down there and significantly increasing the flow that might cause them to-
Yeah, that's what Mary just said.
That's what I said, maybe not correctly. Yeah, because there is a project down there, but they already have an agreement to flow to Southbridge.
So we've been talking about this for the better part of at least three months, and maybe longer than that. It might have been before the holidays, honestly.
A lot of guests.
And then we've had the same type of questions over and over again. And this, and then I don't know who, you know, I know the contract negotiation is going to be a pain, and sometimes things go slow and don't go slow. But it, as, the present value numbers don't seem to make any sense to me of spending $4.2 million for a few hundred thousand dollars a year. That's, that's, we're getting blasted on that. So I think we need to stop, and I'd go with Mary's, both Mary's points, really, but it's Mary Dowling's point about, like, I'm not going to be, I don't feel like we're going to be prepared to present this at all at town meeting. This is, this is complicated, and there's a lot of money involved.
Right. It, it's very complicated. It's, it's concerned all of us, you know, we, and I don't want to blame, I shouldn't use that word, I mean, you know-
I'm not blaming anybody.
No, no, I, I, we, we've had to wait to get some specificity from Southbridge, and we understand in all communities, as you know, this is an extremely busy time of year, and, and I think there's been some staff turnover in Southbridge, to be fair. So they were able to come up with some numbers when we met with them last week. But you're right, I mean, it's a complicated project. It's been a 25-year agreement. We're trying to put things together here, and I think that's another reason for the meeting next week, is to bring in the consultants and bring in Tag and Bond, and try to get some, you know, firm numbers here, to the extent that they are firm and, and develop a plan.
Right, because I do know that, you know, I personally work much better if I can see something written down, that, you know, this is the cost of this, the projected costs going forward, whatever the percent increase is. I mean, when I look at this 4.2 million, that's, that's a lot of money.
Well, we had a meeting with Tag and Bond, I think at this point, it was about two months ago, we're really talking about the rate study and, and tangentially looking at capital items. And, and just this project at that meeting took a significant increase.
Yeah.
You know, and it went up to over $4 million. So it just, just, I mean, it's, it's become important, obviously, because the, the agreement is going to be expiring, and we have to enter into, you know, this came up at our meeting with Southbridge also, is to renegotiate, begin renegotiations of, of the agreement. I think we're going to need to do that, no matter where we go with this particular project. So that's got to be looked at also. But, I mean, I think it's really important for the board to get it from the horse's mouth, so you'd be able to make some decisions on timing here, and, and how all this is going to get financed.
But if we have, okay, Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
The numbers we need the most isn't even the 4.2, whether it's 4.2, or 4.3, or 4.1. We need to know where Southbridge stands. That, those that we know nothing about right now. We haven't been told anything in terms of Southbridge, other than tonight, a 2% increase. And as Jamie pointed out, that's very different than what we've been working with, thinking we're going to have to contribute to their capital plan, to, to make a capital contribution to their sewer infrastructure. That's very different. So what, the, the numbers we need are something coming from Southbridge, so that we can compare whether we want to go forward with this. Because Barbara already said, when we have our meeting about setting the rates, she said that, I don't know, we've been kicking the can, and the rates are going to have to go up, where there's not that many people, not that many neighborhoods on town water and sewer. And with the rates going up, and then slamming them with 4.3 million more, I, I, I mean, I need to know that that's really going to be a cheaper alternative. But we don't know anything, because we're not far enough along with Southbridge to have any numbers.
And-
2% also, do we want, even want to think about another 25-year agreement? I think not. I think maybe a shorter term.
Well, if we get 2% at, at present inflation rates, you would be saving an incredible amount of money, as opposed to running it and building it yourself and maintaining it.
Right.
So what I'm concerned about is, I know that, I, we just need to make some progress on this, because this is, if we have a deal that's really good on the table, we should just execute on it.
Oh, yeah.
Or we are going to go in a different direction and do a larger cost evaluation. But we just need to move it, and it, like, meeting every three months on this type of project is not acceptable at this point.
No, but we do need numbers, so-
A hundred percent. I'm not, I'm not-
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, 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 I know, that's what you're saying.
And we need a term. Do we want another 25-year agreement? Do we want a 10-year agreement?
Well, we can't know that, any of that without numbers.
Well, that's what I mean, but that's all part of the contract negotiation. The length of the agreement, percentage increase, whether we have to contribute to their infrastructure improvement, which it sounds like now we don't have to.
We're just guessing.
Right, I don't think there was, I don't think there wa, I don't know if there was anything definite about capital. I think I brought it up, that it was, that it was a concern. I had heard that it had been brought up. The agreement calls for yearly continuation with yearly agreements. But then again, that's subject to how the board feels, and is that in the best interest of the town? What kind of stability is, is there there for either Southbridge or Sturbridge with just a yearly agreement? So it, it's, it's complicated, and all of a sudden, it's here.
Yeah.
Well, it's not all of a sudden. It's been, it's a 25-year term. We've known it's been coming for 25 years. So-
Yeah, but we didn't pick up on the ball two years ago, when we could have started.
Well, I know, I'm not, but I, but we've been talking about it for a while now.
Yeah. No, so we need more.
Can I jump in?
Barbara?
Yeah, I'm still here.
No, I'm listening to your voice now.
Okay. So, we are going to provide you that. That's one of the things that we want to talk about on the 19th, when we bring Tag and Bond in. to talk about on the 19th, when we bring Ty and Bond in. We want them to give you a clear understa, understanding of what the project does. I will also have debt service schedules for you, that will show, you know, what the estimated cost is per year in debt service versus what we're paying the town of Southbridge now. The thing that has to be understood, though, is the, the contract that's currently in place with, with South, Southbridge, and I understand it's, it's going to expire, but that was on a fixed number of gallons of flow going to Southbridge. So, right now, we're budgeting $215,000 in the budget you just, that you just approved for fiscal '23, for costs to, to Southbridge. In the debt schedule that I have prepared, depending on how we structure the debt, it's about $342,000 for a principal and interest payment in year one, and then it goes down to $216,000 in year 20. The 2% that Bob's talking about, that was what they're, that's what they said to budget for fiscal '23. That's no guarantee that every year going forward is going to be 2%. You know, they clearly, you know, stated, and it's the same thing that we do here, their rate revolves around the costs for running the sewer plant. So there, there are no guarantees. So I think what we have to do, and we can discuss this more next week, but we have to make a determination as to whether we want to invest in our own infrastructure, or if we want to continue to pay Southbridge. The other thing is, that $215,000 number for next year is based on the current level of flow to Southbridge. When, when and if the development that's, that's planned for down at that end of town happens, that's going to increase the flow going to Southbridge and the cost for, that they're going to charge us, because again, our bill is based on flow. It's not a, a flat number. So the normal, when everything stays under, like, the, the highest amount, which Shane or Butch will have to speak to, but I think it's like 583,000, it's like $55,000 a quarter. However, there are times during the course of a year that we, we go beyond that, and then that kicks in a different amount of money. The contract that's currently in place, in my opinion, is very complicated. But those are all the things that we want to talk about with you next week. And, I mean, I agree, it, it is rushed, but I think that, you know, we just need to make a determination of whether, you know, we're going to move forward and have a short-term contract with them until we finish building something, or, you know, at a minimum, buy the, buy the property that's available for the future, in case we change our mind. But I don't think it would be prudent to look, to go into a long-term lease either. I think when, when you go back, and I'll try to pull the numbers together, but, you know, the cost of what we were paying Southbridge, when that agreement started 25 years ago, was nowhere near $215,000 a year. So, we know we have to give you information, and that's why we want to sit down with you next week.
Barbara, we do need the information.
I was going to ask, give us, what have we paid for the last 10, I know you said it was a complicated contract, but what exactly, say, in the last 10 years, how much has it changed with Southbridge?
I don't have that with me right now. I'll have all that information for you for next week. I, I wasn't prepared to talk about it tonight, because I thought we were talking about it next week, but we'll have all that information for you.
Again, I don't know how, without knowing what the deal is with Southbridge, how we can possibly say yes, based upon the past, we want to build this, unless we know what Southbridge is offering us for the future. We have to compare the two. We can't just know what this is going to cost us by sitting down with Ty and Bond. We have to be further along in our negotiations with Southbridge, so we can compare the two.
And even as framed, Barbara, you're, has a present value expenditure versus the cost on something on a lease over a 20- or 30-year period, though those numbers don't make sense to me. So please, try, because that's, I, I'm struggling with that, because it just doesn't add up, that you're, we're spending, we're saying it's, let's say it's four and a half million now. I know that's not perhaps the right number. By the time we go to project, get through town meeting, have everything organized, it's probably going to be up, because costs are not going down in the next six months, realistically. So then you're talking about a five or $6 million cost item, right now, that over, that if we had that money in our pockets over a 20, 30-year period, is worth more money than $300,000 or $400,000 per annum. So I need that, I need to understand why the math makes sense, not just, because it's not just investing in our own infrastructure. It is, what is it going to cost realistically on all of our capital sewer projects, versus what is the cost of that project? And I've, and we've, and this isn't the first time this has been stated. I don't know how many more times we can say this. And it just, we need to, we need to do, it's just math at this point. It isn't what's the better decision? What's the best math?
Yeah, well, that'll be the best decision.
This project that's going in, those owners are going to have to pay, right? They have to pay, they have to pay their betterment fee and...
Yeah, but see, we need to check, yeah, we, we need to, we need to check on Gene with that, because I don't, it's not going to be pumped from Sturbridge. It'll be pumped from the development. They have an agreement with Southbridge. So it's like, that's an entity unto itself.
Oh, okay, so that's a little different than what Barbara was saying. You're saying they already have their own agreement with Southbridge.
I'm, I'm pretty sure.
So that isn't going to include, increase our flow number with them? That's some, that's a big missing piece, too, because if it's not gonna, you know, that, I'm sitting here thinking, why isn't the owner of this development having to foot the bill if it's going to increase our flow and our costs to Southbridge? But you're saying they've got an agreement, and it's not going to be that.
I'm pretty sure, one planning board meeting I watched.
Okay, that is kind of important to know.
They're not pumping to.
If that's, that doesn't go into that contract, it's a very different conversation as well. But I think, I don't want to bully you, Barbara, sorry.
Okay, so.
Well, and I think another thing, another thing that's going to be part of the conversation in talking about additional flow and developments is revisiting connection fees.
Yeah.
Sure.
We got a lot of fees we ought to.
I think businesses on 148 are paying too little in taxes. That's a joke, everybody.
I think, I think the Main Street people ought to pay more. Okay, so we'll have those, we'll get this finished before town meeting.
I'll, I can write all these up and have them for you before, by the end of the week.
Okay, sounds good.
This and the, and the open space.
Yes.
Okay, now we still have the special town meeting.
Could I just say one more thing? If you guys have some very specific questions for us to have answers for next Tuesday, if you could send them to us, so that we can try to be better prepared for what your questions will be. I mean, I, I understand what was just spoken about, but if there's anything else, it would be helpful.
Okay, we all have your email.
Yes, absolutely. When is your next meeting with Southbridge? How is everything left with Southbridge? Did they put anything on the table? Did they put 2% in writing, or is that just a verbal discussion?
It was verbal. And I think the way it was left was that the manager and I need to begin opening discussions about renewal of the, of the agreement, so we can, we can talk about that. And also, just to follow up on Barbara's point, we have also asked Tagenbahn to submit, certainly before the end of the week, what their presentation is going to be for next Tuesday, so the board can have that in the meetings as well.
Thank you.
Before, I know, I'm always doing this, but before we go into the special town meeting warrant, I have a question on the regular warrant. So, so Barbara, I know I always bring this up, but we have always, we've kind of debated the amount of money it should be, but we've always had a warrant article using free cash to offset taxes, real estate taxes. This is the first year that I'm here, that we don't have anything at all. Like the la, it used to be 250. I mean, that goes back all the way to like Jim Malloy, and Sean Sahaski, and Leon, so. I mean, I know we had our meeting with FinCom, and you had said, you know, we've got 20% free cash in, in terms of proportion to our budget. And I know Barbara likes a lot, and I understand why, we've got a lot of capital projects, but we've always offset it with something. Like, last year, it was 450,000. The two years before that, it was 350, and then it was, before that, 250,000. Now we don't have anything. And we have 20, we have 6 million. From my notes, I think Barbara said, I looked at the breakdown.
You were maintaining the rate from last year, because the home values went up, correct? So we took it more, so.
Yeah, we took, because our values went up because of the market.
So we were able to maintain the same rate as the previous year, no increase?
Right, but we had, we offset, we offset it by 450,000 using free cash. And now, I guess Barbara had said, we've got free cash at 16.3%, and we have reserves at 4.7, adding up to 20%. And I think we need to, I mean, I know we need to keep some, because our fiscal policy says 10 to 12, but even if we kept 15%, you know, roughly, I did the math, 15% of a $38 million budget is like keeping 5.7. You can at least give, you know, 300,000. We got to give something back. We, you know, and I know we want to be prudent, but I also Googled, you know, what percentage should a municipality in Massachusetts keep of free cash reserves in proportion to your budget? And like, freecashmass.gov, under the massachusetts.gov website, it says, "Under sound financial policies, a community strives to generate free cash in an amount equal to 3% to 5% of its annual budget." We're even more conservative than that, at 10 to 12%, but right now, we have 20%. And so I, I'm just going to make a motion that we add a warrant article to offset taxes by something.
Barbara, was that considered, or just an oversight?
Oh, I, I put the warrant together. It was, it was an oversight. I can cer, I can certainly add that. I just, I guess I'm used to being the voice of doom and gloom, but I, you know, if you consider the budget projections that Barbara had for the meeting with the finance committee, and then also, if you begin to look at the, the capital plan when that's developed, particularly because it seems to be this town's policy to fund capital items out of free cash, I would, I would just suggest that there's a larger context to, to look at in how, in handling free cash.
But I mean, we've always, we've always had something, and the, the irony here is, we have the most free cash this year, and we're giving nothing back. And in the past, we've had less free cash, and we've given something back.
Although there is, we did receive a lot from the federal government this last year, so it is a little bit, it's a weird year, you know.
I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming anything, I'm just saying.
No, no, I just mean it's a weird year.
It just doesn't make sense that we don't have a war, this is the first year we have nothing.
That'll be on your next draft as well.
Right. I mean, if we've, if we've got the money, there's no reason why we shouldn't avail ourselves on it.
Because then a capital budget starts becoming a wish list. If you have that much free cash, it's like, well, we've got the free cash. I think we need to give something back.
Okay. Good point, Mary. Totally forgot about it. Now, the special town meeting, Article 46, betterment payoff, dissolving of betterment, to see if the town will, I think this might be written a little confusing, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of appropriate from free cash.
Oh, it should be, yeah.
Is it to transfer? To transfer from free cash?
It'd be transfer and appropriate.
Transfer and appropriate from free cash, the sum of $11,340 from the fund balance reserve for sewer betterment, for the purpose of paying recording fees to the registry of deeds, or take any action relative thereto. Finance director is the sponsor. Any questions? Motion?
Make a motion to place and approve, place and support Article 46.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now, Barbara, do we have any numbers for the Article 47?
I don't have a final number yet. I can tell you, it's, it's over $100,000, but I don't know yet. Last, there was still bills coming in. We might just move forward with, if I can't, I have to talk to Butch when he gets back, but if, if he can't confirm to me that all the bills have been paid at this point, we might just have the, the warrant article have no amount in it, and have the motion be the dollar amount, just to be safe. We have done that in the past.
Okay, questions from the board? So it's to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash to fund the snow and ice removal account for fiscal year 2022, or take any action relative thereto. Sponsor board is selecting.
So we would move forward without a number, and then they'll bring you in for the meeting?
We move as a placeholder, basically?
Yeah, because we can always go back and...
I'll move to place and support Article 47.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 48, unpaid bills of a previous year, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year, or take any action relative thereto. Sponsor board is selecting. So Barbara, again, you'll have the list of them?
There aren't any right now, so this is just there, in case anything comes up between now and June.
Okay. Okay, so is it a motion? Hopefully, we don't get any.
Motion to place and support Article 48.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, Article 49, transfer funds to bond account, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,000 to account 99860, or take any action relative thereto. Board of selectmen, sponsor. Is there a motion?
I move to place and support Article 49.
Second.
Now, Bob, we had already closed both, or we can open them up when we get, right? We had, we had closed both warrants before, but we can...
Except for some last-minute capital stuff, but yes. I just say, we, I guess we are done. Before we're done, I just wanted to thank Barbara for all her help with this, and proofing and correcting about nine versions of this warrant. And I would just say, any of the remaining mistakes here, whether they're numbering or typos are mine.
No, I, I moved that Barbara Berry is a total rock star.
Second.
That's okay. I'm just, it's from correcting papers.
Don't worry about the typos. This is just a regular thing. It's not, it's not personal. Mary, Mary can pick up a typo anywhere.
I knew she'd find them if they were there, and I knew they'd be there, too.
Oh, I miss some.
She's just really good at it.
Well, it takes, I, I read a lot, too, but. Okay, next on the agenda, we have old business. Ian, do you have any old? Chase?
I do. The Town Administrator Search Committee, we are going to have the names for you. I will present them this Monday night. We have our interviews scheduled for next Thursday, and I'd ask the board that we keep that, because we lost two candidates in a week that we were doing our interviews, and I don't want to push, once I bring you the three names, there's a chance that we could possibly lose one of the three, and I don't want to see that happen. So I think...
You lost the other $2 jobs?
Yes.
If that's fair.
Yes. Yep. So we, the search committee interviewed, and I was going to have them for you tonight, but we're waiting on the background checks. And I know we had scheduled a meeting for next Thursday night, I believe, to interview.
Yes.
The 21st?
Yes. And I'm going to have the names for you on the 19th, and I ask that we keep that date of the 21st to interview, if possible.
Ian, did you, is that okay?
Yeah, I have it in my calendar. I was...
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Chase, anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Mary, any old? Jamie?
Uh, no.
I have no old. New? Jamie?
No.
I have none. Mary?
No.
Chase? Ian? Okay, we don't have correspondent citizens for...
We must be in trouble.
Name for the record, please.
Tara Linton. I just was curious...
Tara Linton. I just was curious, at the special town meeting, it was brought up in the warrant brought forth by the Recreation Committee for the field. Part of that warrant was the ADA upgrades to the recreation area, as well as removing the flooring and replacing the flooring of the playground. So I was just curious, what has happened to that? I know they applied for a grant. Obviously, there's not, there wasn't a warrant discussed tonight about how to do that, and it seemed like a pretty important improvement that needs to be made to that recreation area. So, I just wanted to make sure it didn't get forgotten, and curious as to what's happened.
Well, we'll, we'll have to ask the rec people.
Yeah, I mean, I know they applied for a grant, so I know, don't remember that, but, but, I must've got sworn in. So, but I think it seems like it's something that should be dealt with, because as far as I understand, the flooring of that playground is making its way into the lake, it has potential, it's potentially harmful, so, that's all.
Okay, we'll check.
We'll check with Annie. You didn't go to a rec meeting?
I have, no, no. So, but as I understand, it has not been-
It was all contained in one, you know, last year.
It was.
So you couldn't vote on one without the other.
Right, right. So I just, you know, I sort of felt like that's something that should be, it's an important piece of that. I thought it should've been separate to begin with, but it wasn't, so, anyway.
Is this, is this the area on Cedar Street?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I think we've kind of gotten dueling numbers on the repairs that are necessary down there, particularly the ADAs.
That's what she's talking about. Last year, it was presented as a package deal to get a new field, too, at $5 million or something. It was, it was combined, and so you couldn't, you know, when you, when it got voted down, everything got voted down, including the ADA upgrades.
Well, so-
And I think Tara wants, and those were only a couple hundred, I mean, not only, but- I think Tara's asking, is that, did that part of it, is it coming back to town meeting? You know, is, is rec presenting a warrant article to fund that, is their question?
No, I haven't seen anything.
They haven't presented anything yet.
Maybe raised it that residents were asking, so. Well, you're there, there you are.
Josh.
I guess I will have to ask in the next-
When's your next meeting, Josh?
I just got sworn in.
That's not an excuse, no.
It didn't tell, Lynn didn't have a, have any idea. Oh, she might have, but she didn't give it to me. Come on, come on here, listen.
Tara, you may want to call Annie, too, Racione, too. I mean, because that's, that's what Bob's gonna end up doing, is checking into her.
Well, I, it was just, that's-
Yeah, we weren't large enough.
Yeah.
Warrant articles from rec. It's not like we couldn't add one right now, so add it, you know.
Reg, oh, reg.
Yeah, we're adding and adding.
I think we're also gonna be having a meeting very soon about where we're going with the street or beach, street or-
Street or beach.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, because people ask about that. Okay, so, no one else from citizens? By the way, congratulations, Josh. No, I wasn't gonna tell you to take your hat off. I, I met him at the candidates' night, and I introduced myself, because I had never seen him without a hat on. He didn't have a hat on then. Okay, so we do have a request for an executive.
Oh, we can, we can bypass that. We can skip that. I can save that for a future meeting.
Oh, okay.
Then I think we're ready.
Motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
No, fine.